We'll keep it out.
Okay, sorry, we got to hit that before we. Meeting is has been called to order. So we don't have anything to say as the board, I guess if you have questions or comments. Or on what you would, if that's what you're here for, I guess that's what the purpose of this meeting is for.
Correct. We had one. Commissioner in Spring County here a couple of weeks ago, so just. I've had a lot of concerns, guys. From citizens. And they come up to with their papers, some of them weren't real pleasant. I was wondering if you had had any concerns with the taxation. Issues. That your proposal might, same as we did the taxi.
Okay.
Some of them come to me and said, let's. USC wants, and I said, guys, maybe not may. Budget for USC, we want to set one on your taxes. I said, yes, yes. But. USD is a separate entity. They are on dual county taxes. But we as commissioners have nothing to do with it. I was just wondering if you guys had had any revenues.
Not in this format, no, I mean, you're the first one that's actually come to us and and I've been on here five or six years now. Of course, this whole revenue neutral thing has just now been an issue these last two. I don't think three years ago it was an issue, but now it's where where we've crept up on the mills. We're allowed to creep up on within within those parameters and and.
Well, I'm just curious.
Yeah.
Because I know I had caught a lot.
Individually, I don't know, I'm not going to speak for everybody, but as far as anyone coming to the board meeting to address it, no, we have not.
I was just curious.
I mean.
I'm not here to holler at you guys or anything, I'm just here to ask, you know, if you've ever did anything because I know I had and I was just curious if you folks had. I know. You know, things, some things are out of our control and making our budget out here. Here a month ago and happened to ask for a raise ourselves. We were going to have to ask for a six mil increase and I said, guys, don't, I'm not happy about that one. If there's any way, let's see if we can slice in spots and we ended up slicing five point one mils off road. And only happened to ask for nine point nine seven one, which is basically one mil. So I'm just curious, I'm not here to condemn or anything like that, I'm just good. Sharing thoughts and information with you all.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Because, you know, it's a tough deal setting on boards. To make tough decisions, I understand very well.
Yeah.
What that is all about.
Personally, I am concerned with it because this last increase, that was another $500 on top of my property tax and. We're looking at doing bond issue and I have a very good feeling that. We keep raising the rate and when we try bond issue, it's going to get shot down bigger line.
Yeah, you could be right. Yep.
We got stopped somewhere.
Well, that's kind of what I told our guys, I said, you know, we as elected officials. We've got to start here on ground floor, basically, I call it. Is turn things around, if we don't start turning it around at the local level, how do we educate our young ones and send them up to be senators or congressmen or a president of the United States? How are we to mold them if we don't start doing it here at a local level because when it gets to Washington, they know nothing. You know, so I, that's why I, if there's any way we can cut ours, I said, let's, let's start shaving it. Let's do something positive, so I would just pat now along with you guys, I mean, don't let him tell you that things can't be done because it can be, guys, whether there will, there is a way. To cut if you have to, and I understand there's times you cannot cut. I really do because there's times that I know where it's coming that we aren't going to be able to either. But it's just the way it is, but you just. We just made some tough decisions and I'm just sharing with you all and just telling you it can be done if. If you have to.
Yeah. Some of the, I don't know if you guys any have other big picture thoughts, but you know, some of the reasoning and justification behind the doing this the last two years. Is our HVAC system and some of that stuff that's been out in the public, the bond issue Wayne mentioned, you know, we're kicking around a lot of things that are going to cost a lot of money.
Right.
And the district has historically been very frugal as far as. Raising mills and and doing that sort of thing for several years and it was kind of a, kind of a preparatory thing for for the economy and the inflation and everything we faced the last eighteen months. From teacher salaries and just on down the line, so yes, it's a concern and it's on our minds, that's that's for sure.
I think something that's important to remember is those, anytime we raise rates on anything. There, there needs to be a justification for it, then you just gave some of our justification, but we probably need to do a better job of communicating that out to everybody, that this is the reason why we're doing it, not just because we can, because there's a need.
I agree, Mark, because I, I gave explanation when we had a few folks at our hearing. At the court house and they, they appreciated it, they thanked us for giving an explanation and yes, I gave them an explanation, just like Kenny did. It does help, guys.
Yeah.
An explanation, that way people know why you need this money, where that money is going, what you're doing with that money.
And unfortunately, like I said, we don't have a lot of participation like we're in interaction like we're getting with you tonight, but we, we attempt to, technology fights us once in a while, but we are trying to record meetings and they're out there on YouTube on websites. So hopefully people, if they're interested, can check in, follow along with the discussions we've had and stuff, but I know those don't always get picked up and technology is not for everybody, so.
Well, and everyone that. Had a concern to me, I said, bring it here tonight, nine eleven at six thirty, bring it here and let your folks talk to you folks. So I, I mean, I tried to do that, but.
Sure.
I guess there wasn't too much success in that one either.
Like Kenny said, we haven't been super successful with that either because we, I think we all kind of give the same message. Bring, bring, if you have a concern, bring it and we don't want to get a lot of participation.
And I, I understand that very well, that's what I told people too, I said, you have concern with us as commissioners, bring it up there on Monday morning.
Yeah.
Eight thirty. That's the place to do it.
It's tough when you get all the phone calls and then you got to be the one to bring it to everybody and.
But you know, I learned to roll with the. And it doesn't bother me, so I just wanted to share with you all here tonight and. Because I knew others wouldn't.
Yep, well, I appreciate it.
Yeah, we appreciate your time and your input.
You're welcome.
They'll hold it back until they explode and then we'll do about it.
Well, yeah, I. Some days my phone go quick ringing.
Thankless job.
Nobody's got to do it.
And we appreciate you doing it.
Well, thank you.
Road construction. I didn't know they'd made it past.
Yeah.
The junction.
Oh, yeah.
I got, I, I forgot about it twice today, went to Smith Center once and I got down there this evening and I screw it, I turned around, went back a mile north.
That's what I did, cut across. It was open, that would get me far enough to get faster.
I had to wait just across the highway, there were two trucks trying to get turned around and back back up, they got run into each other. But yeah, I knew better, I just love my ass.
We do have to take action. We do need to take action, we got about three minutes left and on page, agenda page two for the, there is a specific. Motion to make there if anyone would want to entertain that.
Mr. President, I read. The adoption of the following resolution. Has typed, do I need to read?
You need to read.
Okay, KSA seventy-nine dash twenty-nine eighty-eight provides that the levy of property taxes to finance the twenty-three twenty-four budget of USD seven. Exceed the revenue neutral tax rate to finance the twenty-three twenty-four budget of USD one oh seven to be authorized by our resolution. Now therefore be resolved. Let's keep going, okay, now, now be it. Resolved by U F T one oh seven, the twenty-three twenty-four budget with a levy of property taxes exceeding the revenue neutral tax rate calculated for twenty-three twenty-four as the debtful pursuit to KSA seventy-nine dash twenty-nine eighty-eight is hereby adopted.
And it's a roll call vote. Bobby Foga.
Yes.
Kenny Meisner. Oh, sorry, you're right.
Yeah. I'll give a second.
Good, because I didn't. Okay, sorry, okay, Bobby Foga.
Yes.
Kenny Meisner.
Yes.
Mark Grouse.
Yes.
Brendan.
He's not here.
Wayne Frost.
No.
Brendan Hallerick.
Yes.
Justin Angleton.
Yes.
So that one's done. So move to adjourn. That meeting.
Yes, I think we can.
Give me one second.
And you hear it, I was on some, a couple of different forums. About every district. In the state. Last two years had received just based on cost of goods, cost of everything else.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Motion, Carrie. Six oh.
Now we have two minutes before we do that.
Okay, we'll call the special meeting. For budget approval, budget hearing, I'm sorry. Call it to order. You have anything you want to add, Mr. Sales, before we would. Entertain. A motion to accept the budget.
I don't.
Now we, we're trying to think here, do we accept this? At this meeting or is this just a budget hearing? Yeah, the, we, we'll approve it in the regular meeting, so this is just a hearing portion.
Janet, do you try it? Shell.
I did a talk of Shalanda thing and I'm doing chips. Very good. I like the light. These are the last of the higher garden commandments. Will you read, will you turn it off during? The other one, took them off real quick. Let you guys know what's going on, thank you.
Okay.
You had any of your explosions?
Yes, I have, it's good.
I left my pad, he brought me a jar.
Well, we gave them a bunch of tomatoes because we were busy and didn't have time to do anything with it, so Brenda brought me a jar of hot sauce. And she brought me two jars of something else with some peach in it. And that was very well received. Do I really? Where, where, on what?
On the unofficial board minutes.
Oh, for crying out loud. Wayne, we're just going to change your name, I caught myself typing that incorrected it in one place. No, I'm going to fix it.
It's okay to have aliases. In the newspaper, I was, I was Jim Sales the first time I made the dual.
Nice. Either his wife or Bobby's husband is going to want to know what's going on. Actually, actually Bobby should wonder what's going on because you got the phone number.
That's what I'd be worried about.
He's back.
I will fix it.
Nobody killed me yet, but.
You know that once you make a mistake, when I worked at the base, you got your customers, once you made a mistake. It was all the time. And you are my mistake. Good thing I'm not your, good thing I'm not your mother, right? Though I probably could be. I didn't, I went back and got seconds.
If I don't over indulge now, it might be left over.
There should be. But. I told Selin Tandra they could have a tent of pop snacks to watch them.
Hey, so on the other hand, he goes. Then took him, grabbed a pizza right home and then came here, he said. Well, that's right, you guys get like a food bar and everything else, probably get alcohol too, and I go, no, y'all wish we got alcohol too.
So I brought that up this morning.
It's a school function, what do you think? He goes, oh, well, sucks to be you.
And that's how long they.
Yeah, nobody's.
That we're doing.
Yeah, so second.
All those in favor? Motion Carrie six so.
I thought we had a.
Okay, we'll call the regular board meeting to order. Um, what did you say need removed, junior?
Somewhere. It's on, yeah, it's on the. Yes, that one.
I didn't see that in. Documents either. There's no other additions or changes or questions on the agenda, we'll.
The only thing I got is like the six H in our drive. It talked like non-resident, open enrollments, anything like that. Is that something that we're?
That shouldn't be five.
Okay, okay, that's fine, I'm just.
Our drive is incorrect, is what you're saying.
I got a note from Kevin, Brendan and I did about. Dates for any meetings with teachers.
We have. Five I is the last one on there, it got added at the last minute.
Okay, that's the same, we'll make sure.
Yes.
I know they got put on. I've got Sam, I got leave passes for you guys.
Yes, and now if you don't have one. They are charging at PTL junior high events also, those work, even though it says NPL, they work at PTL.
Appreciate it.
So don't leave without them.
And they're charging a basketball, only some are charging volleyball, football, yet, just because of the.
Okay, any issues with the agenda, seek approval?
To approve the agenda was the one I have removed.
Sandy, second.
All those in favor? Motion carried six. Consent agenda.
Oh. That one I've got, they, and Sam would probably talk on those. They have too many at play practice tonight, they could not come, but Mr. Myers, I think is going to address it.
No questions on consent agenda?
I moved to consent agenda.
All of them in favor, motion carried six. Recognition of guests, we have none. We have on here Rock Hills FBLA national report, but they're apparently, that's the conflicts and couldn't be here tonight.
They had to move play tryouts to tonight to avoid Wednesday night stuff. So I guess the only other thing was I did, I think part of that conversation may. Was going to be about that financial change we did last year for going to national. But the words, thoughts on that were at this time.
Were the kids just going to give us a report on their trip?
We're going to give a report on that, but we still needed to resolve. At, at that time, the board had spent. Forty-six sixty-one eighty-nine to cover costs that had not been. Planned on or whatever for. Is the changeover with sponsors and fundraisers.
That does not have the donation from the board out taken out of that.
Right.
So.
So I guess the question is, what is the board's expectations from the FBLA? Or refunding. Type one. Approved them to now have fundraiser. Similar to what FFA does. That would be. Forward. I guess a lot of these questions is, what is the? Loaning to somebody is that.
So well, like they said, we couldn't, we can't loan. So I, I do know in talking to Jill that they have raised some money, they have went out, the kids went out and did some work for Similings to raise some money. I think if they, you know, if we subtract out what the board said that they would donate to them like they do to every group when they go some to nationals. They maybe have around $900 left to start and then they'd be back at the same position trying to raise a bunch of money. But they have that and they are very willing to, to give. That back to the board with the board spent.
Problem with that one is they're always going to be.
They're always going to be behind.
Yeah, they're going to be a year behind every time they start, that's, I know, I don't like that.
And they'll be trying to earn money in the summer to pay off.
I guess, you know. If you look at it from a certain, a certain way and you can look at it many ways. There, when we look at the, the comparison between them and FFA, FFA had fundraising ability that FBLA has not had with that non-solicited fundraiser. And now with having that, they should be on equal footing, so. I would like to see that just move forward, just. So that we can.
And they won't have to come back next year and ask for.
Yeah.
A loan again to see them through.
Do we need to?
I don't think we need to.
More appropriately put that as an action item next month possibly and and.
You know, you've already given them the money.
Yeah.
And with no stipulation that it had to be paid back since it couldn't be a loan. So it can be left at that.
So we asked the. The FBLA, the kids and whatnot to come back next month.
Yeah, they're going to come back and report on it, yeah, yeah, that's separate from this financial, this was just they're going to come talk about the experience and what they did and things like that, yes.
And we should, I guess, as a board, we prepared to address the club with them possibly in this financial piece, just decide if that's just, we're going to forgive the donation, so to speak, or.
I don't know how that looks like Janet said.
Yeah.
Do with given, so.
Sure, I'm not sure what's the right way. I mean, I guess they can offer to pay it back and you guys can. Say yes or.
It sets an awkward precedent, but we probably need to kind of think about. What, what that all means, but I'm at a loss right now for.
I don't know how, either, but. The purpose, letting them have that fundraiser to try to set them up for success. The next year, but you know, if you're trying to make them pay back. They're never going to get there, I think you got to give them some place to start.
Yeah.
That do that if we just. All that. Let them start, right?
Yeah, it kind of a way of getting them caught up is probably where they should have been to start with.
Right.
Is the way to look at it possibly. I'm good with that, I guess, we'll just look forward to their report next month then if they can attend.
Yep.
Anything to add, Mr. Sales to that?
No, I. Appreciate what you guys did to get them back, even I agree with Mark that. Allow them to be ahead of the game for a change, I think it's going to, should be benefit. Pay them big benefits for them to the boards.
Don't have anything under board member reports unless any of you have anything to bring up for that, I don't think we have any. Extracurricular stuff going on. That isn't already on the agenda to talk about. Discussion items, the return to school plan.
Yeah, so. I, I guess to start with. When I came in in July, just trying to clear up the, the webpage and everything else. There was a huge, a whole menu on COVID stuff and I was kind of ready to move past that. So I just told Billy and it, nothing had been updated for a couple of years on there, so I just told Billy to take it off, well then. Sitting it on a forum, the time of budget stuff is you have to have a return to school plan posted on your website if you're receiving federal dollars. Which is our S R funds, and so I typed up kind of. What I would consider. It's sufficient reopening plan just tells us that we're having our, I mean, you can read through it. Or I could post it here if you guys want me to, but basically just says that we're not. Really following any. There's not much for COVID guidelines other than you want to wear a mask you can, but outside of that. We still have. To the KDHE grant that we've got, they're providing us with tests if parents. Or family members want them, they can come get a take out or at home test that will provide for them, but. Outside of that, the district's not doing much. Talks there about some of the things that we're putting in place and what they do with the air purifiers and things like that. We have to have something on there, but I want it to be as. Minimal as possible. So I just, and I don't, I don't know if this needs. A voter approval or what, but we have to have one that's supposed to be updated every six months. So we return to school plan.
I think it looks conservative, sufficient.
Say I don't. I don't know that it requires us to do anything other than what we're going to review or make major changes, so.
Okay, well, again, I just wanted to make sure you guys were careful with that and I. Really get that posted. I got the date updated for today, ready to go, but. Yeah, it's supposed to be updated every six months, so.
This will be, this will be our first update.
So we'll make sure that we stay on top of that, just again, just to follow line.
That's all the more reason to keep it kind of clean and simple, if you got to look at it every six months, you don't need it to be fifty pages long.
Well. Okay.
Perfect, we can move on to state assessment data, you're going to pick that up, okay? Might be easier.
Guys. It's on there, I'll put it up here so you guys can see it and kind of explain a little bit of it, I got that, I've put that spreadsheet on there, it just kind of shows all the state assessment data and information. A lot of this data probably doesn't make a lot of sense, but this is the easiest one to describe and explain things. We know that. This just shows all our data for our entire district and what the state really started doing a couple of years ago is except for having those older levels, level one, level two, they've kind of. Broken up into eight levels, so there's a, the blue represents the low half of that level, but the gold represents the upper or higher level on that. And so I talked with Santa Cass a little bit about this, but if you look at it as an overall district, our focus needs to be these high level one kids. Obviously, if we can get a half level move, all of a sudden now we've got a lot more movement into level two. We obviously want to see that continue to go across, but this breaks it up. As a district, our biggest group is in the high level ones, which. We recently adopted. In language arts and it's all very critical, it's going to help align us as well as too, so. We recently adopted in language arts and it's all very critical. That's just gonna help align us as well as too, so. It breaks it down. You can see it by grade level if you want to. There's a ton of tabs on here. Like I said, I don't want to overwhelm you with it. If you're a spreadsheet viewer like I am in one of the trouble, you can, but this just breaks it down pretty easy. That shows, you know, there's your 10th grade. And it was kind of a common theme that our biggest group of students is in that high level one. The state would tell you, if you listen to legislatures, legislators, they tell you that they want everybody in levels three and four. Level two is grade level content. Is proficient grade level. So if we get everybody to level two, that makes me feel a lot better. Continue to push that forward. Obviously, the levels three and four, but. And at times too, you're comparing apples and oranges. You're looking at every grade level, it's different kids. I get that. One or two kids can make a big difference, but. When you've got a grade forty-four percent or you've got truly, you've got about sixty percent of your kids are level one. To me, that's, that's pretty concerning and that needs to start with straightening the core. If it's true. If you guys have questions, just jump in and ask.
This is last year data.
Correct. Yeah, we'll get this year's hopefully by, they won't take until spring and hopefully get them for a school year out in May. But I got this spreadsheet breaks down, breaks stuff down for you. Seventh grade numbers a little bit better. You know, sixth grader, there's nobody in that low level ones, which is good. We move all those from level one into level two, then our data looks really good. We'd like to see a horizontal shift to level four for all. Fifth grade looks pretty, I mean, fifth grade pretty solid score for traditional Bill Curran. Fourth grade, but it's one of you guys, just so you guys kind of know where we're at with our state assessment score. Still graded pretty well last year as well. But. I have this spreadsheet set up to where this will continue to go on. We've got. This will show you how the colors represent the same kids. So it makes it a little bit easier to follow. This is your graduating class, so that'll show you how many scored. And this is at the level three or four, which is what. They want us to get to. It'll show you how they've transitioned. Obviously, there was no test in the nineteen twenty year. But I think it's pretty evident that for a lot of grades, especially those lower ones that. Learning loss years pretty detrimental. So we like to continue to move that up. I just present that to you guys so that you have it. All right, if you want more information or want to sit down, we'd be more happy to kind of explain some of that to you. The ultimate goal is to make sure the kids are prepared. We've got some data that's important we need to focus. Anybody have any question?
Facilities and HVAC involved next.
Okay, that's just what I just wanted to put on there for us to get back and sort out some discussions about. Ice wage back, some of that. What are we gonna look at? Here's important, Wayne, that's our earlier night, but if we're gonna. If we think we're going in the direction of Vaughn, then we need to start, we can talk about that teachers. Or staff meetings and kind of stuff. So I just wanted to make sure we sort of have discussions and kind of keep me informed of that. And opening up for you guys to.
Yeah, I think, I think we probably, if we're, if we're gonna reengage with staff and community a little bit, we probably need to get that figured out. We talked, we talked about a timeframe for that last time that it escapes me, I guess.
The dates, what was that?
We, we haven't said anything.
We haven't said any.
Yeah, but I thought you said Kevin had sent you something.
He wanted to know if we had any dates in mind.
Oh.
Oh, that's for just the board meetings, not the HVAC stuff.
Correct. So, I mean. I haven't heard back from Fire Marshall yet. I've reached out to them last, right after the last board meeting about. If we're gonna have to sprinkle, but we'll go whether or not by assumptions, we probably need to look at that anyway, but.
Well, they told us we would have heard back pretty quickly on that. We went to that meeting in.
Yeah.
Manhattan. I was under the impression that that was something that we could find out real fast.
The, the part that he told, that he mentioned there was, they thought they were good too, until they got into that one project and they had to go back and retro, but that's what concerns me too. So anyway, I just, we had talked about it in a while. I felt like we need to keep the discussion and start. Not that I want to, but we know it's something that has to get done and passed around this discussion, so.
Yeah, I don't recall the timeline. We were discussing last month exactly for putting together some of those staff and community meetings again, but. Needed to figure something out, I think by the December meeting, if I recall, on a direction, on a definite direction we're gonna go. And I couldn't remember where we were at on. HDK, Narrows and Miss Flora, if there was anything else we were waiting for on them other than they were waiting on Fire Marshall information.
Yeah, and that is best, that report, the environmental survey, there's a lot of it, but nothing is. And they need to be remediated right now, but once we start destruction. The modeling, we have to make sure that that's being mediated correctly. I, I know that there was a lot of the facility survey stuff you guys did in twenty twenty. Does that sound right? The community stuff, is that stuff pretty relevant? Is it something that needs to be revisited?
I think we had our dreams set pretty high back then.
We were, I was just gonna say the same thing.
Thirty million. We ignored looking at thirty million because we thought we rebuild everything and.
Think we got a lot of good information from those meetings, but then quickly found out that. We just probably weren't gonna be able to get to a lot of what we talked about in those meetings. I mean, we, we have these. A lot of great ideas were submitted by the community and things that we've talked about in the board and teachers and students and. But it quickly moved back down to just pretty much fixing the HVAC system. Once we started seeing what kind of cost we're running into, so I.
Yeah, and I think if we're gonna reengage with the public and teachers on what we're doing or what we're gonna look at, I know there was some. If I recall, there was some positive discussion about two question piece to the bond, like here's a bare minimum, we need help. Possibly with how this HVAC project's gonna go, but we would also maybe like to pick out a couple of things that we were gonna do. You know, the CTE. Piece, another, you know, possible another building or what, what have you, any number of things, but that's probably what we need to define and reengage what question one exactly is gonna be. And if we want to do a two-part deal, what that is gonna be. And get some of that involvement again, probably. So I'm just thinking, I think that was where we touched on last time with. With having another meeting just to kind of bring everybody back in, get them up to speed of like, you know, big picture. The dollars are just too extreme at this point in time to tackle that. To tackle what was proposed, you know, eighteen months ago.
Sure, and I didn't know if some of that data was relevant or if we kind of need to just put that aside, regather data, I need to.
I'd still think it's relevant and they got us some good clean numbers. If I recall, they finally got some stuff to us that we felt was pretty useful. So I think that's. As far as us trying to pick out what we want to attempt to do on a two-part question. You know, I think that information is relevant that's there.
Well, yeah, I have them help us figure out that second quarter.
Well, yeah.
And that would allow the community and teacher involvement, then they'll.
They at least need to be in on the discussion so they know what we're up against. And what we would like to do, but it's gonna, it's gonna require some dollars, so.
Because I, I mean, not to discount all that work, because I know there was a ton of work you guys did, but would it be some sense it's a little bit removed? Is it worth sending a survey out to staff just saying, what do you feel like are the three biggest facility needs? The district for the building, for your classroom, or is that, is that excessive?
Principals. We've been through this so much.
We did this last fall. We had, I know in our building, we did where they listed everything they possibly wanted and then we. Broke it down into four different categories as far as, I don't remember what it was, you know, facilities, cosmetic. Classroom, whatever, and then everybody ranked them one through whatever, and then we listed them. Lowest number, highest priority, and then put together a five-year plan for, just like we did several years ago, so. We have that, we have that document.
When did you exactly do that again?
We did that at the end of last year, and so we have it. I mean, I can, now that doesn't mean number one was always number one and two is number two, like, you know, parking lot might have been number three, but because they're paving the highway right now and we could get it cheaper, that might have got bumped up.
Right, well, it's all part of the discussion and.
Yeah, but we, we do have that all, everything they wanted and everything ranked, doesn't mean you're gonna get everything, but if you're. You remember, we did that several years ago and, you know, I think it was a positive morale thing for them knowing that. We're stepping forward every year and we know, hey, my. Wall might not be painted this year, but I know in two years it will.
Well, that's a tool that we can use.
Side note, he mentioned parking lot and paving. Only was gonna check on when they were putting that mixing plan in down there.
Yeah.
So, I think you ran up, Brendan texted me today and he said. Sitting in the hotel waiting room, talked to a guy that works there and gave him my number. He was supposed to, he's supposed to be calling next day or two about, since all the stuff was closed. They gave me some, right, so, so when I, when I get that information, I'll just share it out with you guys, but.
It's better than the wall, still than a view of the whole.
It's got a band-aid.
Well, anyway, yeah, let's, let's explore that, but you know, I think that tool that Sam mentioned, did you guys, you didn't have that? Well, that's just something that we can.
At some point, it's for me all the information gathering.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm not saying we need.
I, I would just ask it for perception of getting staff on board to help sell that to their friends and family.
Yeah, but yeah, I think, I think another meeting is necessary in that format, just to kind of bring everybody up to speed to what our expectations are now and what we would like to do. And what we're, you know, what we can do, what we can't do. So, yeah, if there's any small, if there's anything that you feel like you have that you could do, that's great, but we, but we can utilize those meetings as well. To gather what little more information we might need. So.
Hopefully, post-election things look a little bit better.
But, yeah, well, we'll need to probably. Bring us some dates next month possibly with like what we're, what, or what that looks like and I guess get with your. Principals and see what, what fits the calendar for. Middle October, I don't know.
I just, I just wanted to make sure that we continue those discussions.
Yeah. Good to move on then?
Yeah.
Elementary school building goals is next.
I emailed it out this, this afternoon or this evening, and I also gave you guys a hard copy of B L T. That, and we really wanted to have a focused set of goals, so we carried over the academic goals from our KISA. Once we have KISA goals again this year, we'll, we'll change those around, but because we're a title one school, we also have to have some. Goals that are called industry goals, and so those are those lower ones, and then we just. Put in there what we're doing as a B L T and as a building to make sure that we're meeting these goals, and so we just wanted to share that information with you guys. And we'll also tell you as we're looking, we don't have fast reach data all the way down, but what we are noticing in our fourth and fifth grade. One thing that we look at is the accuracy of what the students are reading and we want them to be at ninety-eight percent or better. And I would say less than ten percent of both our fourth and fifth grade are at a hundred percent accuracy, which that's a big deal. And so a really big celebration that we've been talking about at the elementary.
Nice summary. Appreciate you putting it in that format. Any other questions for? Kathy?
What's the spelling process?
So with the spelling process with phonics and the science of reading that, that is the. The pendulum, you know, it's not the memorization of words anymore. It's really looking at how to sound those words out so that when they get to the bigger words. They're able to sound those out. And so right now, B L T is working on a video series that we're gonna send out to parents. That kind of explains how to help their children at home rather than just the rote memorization of it. So that it gets a little bit deeper in the understanding those letter sounds and how they come together to make the letter combinations and sounds.
The other questions? Thank you. That's our phone.
Yeah, we were able to, I worked with Mrs. Cox about the S R two that didn't be spent by the end of September and we just kind of. Set this on rotations and technology needs, we use that. Instead of buying some of that stuff in May, we can utilize that in a different way. And so just so we lose that money, we develop technology. So we got. The one that we didn't have purchased yet is the stuff with the woods class, just to make sure that it has enough ramps to cover the new CAD. Right? I don't want to just buy enough to scrape by. I'd rather get something we can grow into a little bit more to with the three D printer. So we're trying to. Pardonize that, but a lot of the S R two we used for. Just updating and moving ahead with some of the transferment, the rotational stuff with. Technology. So, and then the other part of that is just. I'll, I'll, I'll finish. And have to turn in an S R quarterly report at the end of September. They'll tell us what we have left, but we know that right now. Boring something miraculously, we're setting in good enough shape to look at. Moving forward with that. Attention pay option. So. I just put on, knowing we talked about trying to make that work and running out of time, we know that we need some new technology upgrades and just. With that route, that technology might can be used elsewhere.
What that technology do is, we installed that thing to measure the power. High school. Is that, somebody asked me about that a while back, but I had no response. Rex did all of that, never spoke to any of us about it. He met with him on his own. There's something, a fourteen thousand dollar, if I remember right, that was approved to go on to. Somewhere in our HVAC, some sensors or something. We know nothing about it. We know nothing about the program. I have no clue where it is.
Is that the one that's in the boiler room or something? There's.
It's something through Dan Whistler training or is it training?
I, yeah, and I think Billy, Billy and I worked on trying to get ahold of somebody trying to even find the password or how that could be used, because the data is supposed to be used in the classroom. But we didn't have access to the data to use it, and I'm not sure.
When, when they came to install it. He came in, he had Nate shut something off and.
He crashed the system or something.
Yeah, it froze up several units because he just wanted this off. We, I have no idea. Know nothing about it.
I'll find out some information for you, because I don't, I don't know much.
It cost several thousand dollars, whatever.
It costs quite a bit, yes, more than, probably more than that, but I know that we did, I think, get some. Um, I know that we did, I think, get some information on how to. Maybe possibly get in. I know Billy said the data that's there, we might as well use it, but it's. There are other places we can get that same data for no cost.
Was it something that was through.
Boyd had it, so we got it.
I will, will we use that for money on there or?
I think so.
I think, I think we might have, I'd have to.
Cause I got it, but it's not being utilized.
Be a good learning tool though. Especially for those kids that wanna explore that career.
I guess I would just suggest, you know, for further discussion on how we, but some of the. Retention pay and some of the stuff we've discussed a little bit about, you know, have uh. An S R three breakdown, fourth maybe next month to fully discuss like what we want to do and how we wanna do it.
That last, last one.
I'll show you the more appropriate meeting to probably decide that stuff.
I showed you what each one of those categories represent and how much holds you, how much is on each one of those. Initial transportation vehicle, right? We helped this step, I had all these, the sales rep, they're gonna have a quotes and. Haven't gotten a lot back. Um, I would tell you that. Alexander's the only one who even gave me numbers. But Chevy no longer makes fleet vehicles. So he sent me, and I didn't share with you because I haven't got enough information from others. He sent me some information about. But none of them are making cars anymore. That the suburban, he told me. They have a bit allowance, he said the. Two thousand twenty four are difficult to get right now, but about fifty two eighth is what he quoted us at. And I talked with Richard English or Ruby English at Lloyd, the GM dealership there. He basically said, sorry, we're not gonna give you a quote right now because. They can't order anything until they sell something off the lot. That's the only way to get allocation from Chevy or GM. So um. My chance was talking with Kenny, they went on vacation with an expedition and mentioned the seatbelt notification. So I started calling Ford dealerships. All the expedition, ex, the expedition max is the same exact. And that's a standard feature now, the new ones that on the computer screen, it'll show you if the seatbelts buckled or not. To me, that's a, is a great extra layer of safety uh as well. So I've reached out to some of those. Fleet um is still an option with Fords. Um, I just haven't heard anything back yet. The guy. Um Ricky at Lloyd. Ford got us set up with the F I N, so we have, we're able to purchase fleet. So I'm gonna look with him. I'll give you my numbers if I get that. I know we talked about wanting to replace the suburban for sure. You know, and then the other thing. We get to feedback from you guys on is. I'd like to consider at least looking for a fuel efficient vehicle, for instance, today. Was it today, last Friday? Cassie had a couple of teachers going to Hayes for letters training. They drove our vehicles, so we didn't have any. So allow. Then the other side of that is. Two and a half hour trip driving a four drive suburban. Putting extra mileage and the fuel, ten mil, ten miles in the gallon, maybe. Just something to consider too.
It, it's been brought up to this group a few years ago, and I think the argument was always for. Get another suburban, cause you can always throw eight kids in it and utilize it. And it's, it's hard to argue with, but as. Well, yeah, but, but mercy's a car is what he's saying. And uh, but in the wake of fifty and sixty thousand dollar SUVs. And four dollar gas does. You've had some figures, I think, right? Like some cars and cocks and stuff.
So Chevy and Ford are no longer making cars. The most fuel efficient they have is for Ford, it would be the Ford Escape, which they're now making a. Better three cylinders, so you get thirty five plus miles a gallon, which has decent seating on it. Alexander, they have Chevy Equinox, same type of deal. Um, for about twenty five. For a front wheel drive Equinox, that's a new one off the lot. Trailblazers are about twenty four. If you wanna go that route, they're a little smaller. But again, I was just looking at what do they have to offer for fuel? Um, I've reached out a couple and I haven't heard back. Again, I apologize, but. When I checked the last Friday following up, they said, yeah, we'll have it to you by Monday morning. Well, Monday morning came and went. But some of them have some cars that are even. You know, one or two years old and I asked them with low mileage and I asked them if they had extended warranty, you know? And they all do extra three grand, but they have, you know? Hundred twenty, hundred fifty thousand mile warranty for three years or so.
Is that a O E M warrant here or is that?
It would be after, aftermarket warranty for a lot of those. But again, I. I'm a little bit disappointed because I was promised a lot of quotes and I didn't get. I spent a lot. Lot of phone conversations with that, but. And then a guy I talked to kind of fair. Burberry. Uh, the Ford dealership there, he said the best thing that he's been doing is. He said, well, not so much school districts, but sheriff's departments and different things else. They said. Hey, we have this amount of money to purchase a vehicle. This is what we want. And then you'll go out, find one, basically be a broker.
And find a used one, so to speak, or what it be.
Yeah, they would, they would fit our needs, you know, A, we wanna. We want a twenty one or newer with less than twenty thousand miles on it. And then he'll go out and find. He looked for a used expedition and the closest one was Dallas, Texas. So.
Big picture, though, this group needs to give him guidance on if we wanna explore. A cheaper, fuel efficient car, or do we just keep stacking Suburbans and expeditions or whatever we end up getting? Because, I mean. I guess. My instincts tell me, yes, it gets, when one or two teachers are going somewhere in an eight passenger suburban. Uh, getting seventeen miles to gallon if they're lucky.
Every activity that we go to an industry or goes to.
Right.
And I can tell you how hard it is to park one of those big things when you've driven it by yourself to Topeka and get in a spot. And the other, the other thing too is, is, and if we hire a nurse again, the nurse goes back and forth between the buildings all day. We pay mileage between the buildings. We don't pay you coming to work, but once you get here and then you go to buildings, then she tracks that. I'm running back and forth to the high school every day. It'd be nice to not turn my little car on and for those short little trips.
I have her complaints, not, not since, you're not in this district, but another district, so. How bad of a look it is to see. School Suburbans going down the road, one person in them, but it's, you know, it's, there's, there's some image to that too, that's kind of wasteful.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm not crazy about it when I have to park and, and there's a lot of other school Suburbans and some small cars, but. Parking spots aren't very big.
I'm fine with exploring it as an option. Do you see to find something out there that's?
On the Sunday, I got my uncle and aunt have one that gets forty.
Oh, wow. Said my car just got thirty five going to Colorado back.
I have a Volkswagen Jetta that's a diesel that gets forty five miles to the gallon, so.
Well, I just wanna give Mr. Sales some guidance on if we're okay with. Bring it, if you wanna bring something to us to vote on by and, you know. You know, I, I don't have a problem with it. Like I said, cars are just Suburbans, the like are just getting higher and gases.
We're not, we're not married to Suburbans either. Better way to go at this point is, you know, if they can't get fleet vehicles from Chevy anymore than.
It's probably, probably pretty apples for apples.
Well, it goes in the background until somebody hooks one and then it pops it up.
So I, I mean, if nothing else. I don't want this to set wrong, but perception is, we're putting an extra emphasis on safety too. So I would continue looking at that because right now, if you can't order fleet, most of the stuff coming that are getting built is. The. We don't need to be, and so he, he said, well, we got one that's coming in. And I said, what's that one? He said eighty eight. I said, nah, thank you. So. There, the problem is not getting cheaper and I, Ford does have the twelve passenger vans. I got in touch with Keith prowling at the stadium just. To see if things have changed, but those are not, cannot use those for public transport for students, so. The twelve passenger van is not an option.
What's sitting in an expedition, right?
It's just like a suburban. Well, yeah, I don't think when we go.
For the expedition wise, I didn't, I told him not to pull any one four drive. Anything that might be used for routes, I wanna make sure, but um as far as the highway mileage.
And, and I do know like the Equinoxes and some of those little crossover all wheel drives, some of them can be a little problematic and maybe. It just kind of depends on the, the make and working the kinks out. So, I mean, some of that can be considered, but if we would buy new and it would be under warranty. And it's cheap enough, like he's talking about twenty five thousand brand new, I believe, a couple of them, you know? In my opinion, we would, maybe we would trade it every three years and just stay in warranty on something like that if the track record isn't as solid as a suburban.
The Equinox is about the same price as a twenty three Malibu. But they're longer making the Malibus after this year.
So I would recommend looking at new versus used. Probably not gonna pay that much more.
And I just think for the warranty aspect of it, it's, that's where I'm at too.
Trade it in after.
Something that we can, I mean, figure out what cost a lease.
Well, anyway, you got guys to bring us, bring us all the information you want.
Yeah, and I was kinda hoping to have more. More information on uh. The expedition backs, cause. Getting that one replaced would alleviate a lot of our challenges right now too with lack of activity drivers, bus drivers and. We had everything out Friday night and then once they ever got back. Eric Rothschild, by the way, has been fantastic. He helped me out. About ten thirty Friday night, we went to the, fueled up all the Suburbans, then ready to go, cause they're all heading out Saturday morning. Six thirty, seven o'clock for cross country and volleyball, so. I'll keep you posted on how last.
All right, great. Superintendent Evaluation, uh Mark has reworked our evaluation form. Uh, and tried to kind of simplify it and streamline it for, especially for these first couple that we do for Mr. Sales on. What I call kind of short notice, barely being on the job two or three months, then we need to get an evaluation done, so. Um, if you haven't had a chance to look at it, please do raise any questions or concerns. I, I like it. I like how. It's, it's structured for more comments than just. And then you can give kind of an overall score for each area. I think I like that a lot better than trying to track fifty numbers down several sheets.
I, I cut. Quite a few of the items off of there that, that I know. You know, it's, it, that, that last one was, was kind of one, something that we, you know, put together and said, we're gonna try for a while, see how it worked and it's. It worked fine, but there was, I know there was a lot of comments that some of those items were pretty hard to rate. Because we just didn't see them or hadn't, hadn't been here long enough to see it or we didn't, didn't have it. So I tried to take some of those things off. Um, so there's quite a bit fewer items and then the items that are on there, I kind of. Cut the wording down just to simplify them a little bit, so they're a little bit easier to. To, to rate, you know, or to have some thoughts on. And, and then hopefully this would be something that's probably be a little more. User friendly, maybe something a little bit quicker to get through, something that won't require compiling a bunch of scores from the end of it. So um, and I guess Kenny, what I would say is if. This is the direction that you guys wanna go, I would just say, let's go this direction. Let's not try to have two different ones. Let's just.
Move to one and leave it at one.
Yeah.
So I, I would agree.
And, and I'm, I'm happy to make more changes or cut more things off or, I mean, whatever. Like I said, you're not gonna hurt my feelings on, on any of it, if you have suggested changes or. Things that you wanna be differently, but I was trying to come up with something. It's, it's in the format of that one that, that we got from. Was Gary, from Gary, which I guess is a key, was a key.
So the K S B and K S D E and the Kelly mentioned, they're all, they're all working together to kind of have one. Across all lines.
So if some of those items from that one are on here to replace some of the ones that were on here. Uh, but the overall format is, is now like that one where it's, you put comments and do an overall rating rather than. Rate every single thing. I think it'll make it. And you know, you don't have to put comments in every box, uh but if there's things that you have. Thoughts or questions or like, yeah, he's doing this good or I see more of this. It can be simple little comments like that too. Just to make it more effective and give him more input, but. Anyway, that's, that's what I came up with.
Yeah.
Will we need to approve this? I think probably you do.
Do we need to approve the format?
Cause we, we approved that last one.
Adopt this as our su, adopt this as our superintendent evaluation tool.
I know that previous one on the, and, and they'll, I'll, I'll put. There's some other pages that go with this that were, that came with that. That one that Gary gave us that kind of has the. Instructions, I guess, on how to use it and then dates of when to use it. Well, I can include that in a final packet. But uh, I know that that previous one we did on the, on the front page of it, it's got a date.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. All those in favor? Motion carried. So I think the timeline, the expectation is we should be doing this right now, but.
That's why I went ahead and sent it to Janet so she could put it on here. Um, so you guys are welcome to print it off and start. Right now, you can't fill anything out on there. I'm not. Print copy, you know, you print it off and write it. I'd like to get it so you could type in the boxes and flick the ratings.
I can do that for you.
But I'm not super good on, I've got the software to do it, but I don't have the brain power. So do you like us to complete this prior to next?
Yeah, yeah, that's all I was gonna say. Bring it with you completed.
Ready for this time, but the next time I'll have it ready.
Send you, problem with that other thing that I got from Gary's, it's, it's a locked file, so I can't take any, I can't even copy and paste off of it. Without having a password. So any of that stuff is gonna have to be.
We'll get the password.
Way to get around that.
Gary is very kind.
I'm gonna be even copy and paste text off of it without popping up saying you have to have the password or you were created the documents. It's pretty well locked down.
We'll see if we can get that.
But anyway, yes, please print it off, fill it out the best you can and bring it back. And if we have time and we should take time to go through it as a group. Sign off on it and get Mr. Sales' evaluation. You would like him to fill out his own, probably a self evaluation piece of it, so bring all that next month. Is the goal, so. We moved and approved it, right? Yep, okay. Out of district policy.
Yeah, so let me give you this. I, I just figured it'd be easier to have a print copy of this. This is again, just some guidance about. Timeline, this is state statute stuff that we gotta have for. I don't know that it's gonna be that big of a challenge for us. It's not like we're gonna have, I don't assume we're gonna have a flood of. Fifty new kids coming in from other districts, and I'm trying to figure out how to make it work, but. Uh, this is just kind of a flow chart about, flow chart about when we need to. Start having stuff done. We do have to, if you see on the right side, the third box down. We have to publish hearing notices for this. And. Then in November, we'll have to. Make. Final changes to all that. The other documents I put in there show you. Some information, I changed it to five H. Literally five, just so you guys can. See that, but. By January, we have to have that adopted about. How many, whatever our, our. Capacity is. And one of those documents it talks about, it's pretty easy to have us that capacity for elementary, uh whether it's, you know. Teacher student ratio, we want no more than. Arbitratory number fifteen kids in a classroom, wherever the case, that's pretty easy, but when you get in the secondary level. Where not everybody's gonna have the same ratio. It's just some things that we'll have to. Determine the, the one thing about this, this open enrollment. Policy is. Whatever you set as your capacity. There's really no way to keep a kid coming into your district if they want to, if there's capacity for. Unless they've been expelled, when there's something like that, but then you say no, but other than that. So there has to be a little bit of thought process to it, I think. Again, those. Around the the city and the metros, it's a little bit different because you have a lot of back and forth. Um influx of kids, but it's still stuff that I think that we need to think through about what's going to be best for us and our staff members, so. I just wanted to share all that information with you guys to kind of look at. I'll have more uh ready to go for you guys next week, next week, next month as far as. Uh draft policy, one of those shows you the actual. The one that's. Non-resident enrollment policy. Uh it shows you the actual KSB policy and then some the red stuff was things to consider. Everything that I've. Sat in on, listened to with this is. The policy, yeah, well, the policy's important. What's more important is making sure you have a good um student code of conduct policy. To where if an outside kid from outside the district comes in. Not living up to expectations and staying in good standing, you have grounds to get rid of them, but. You need to make sure that that's. Student good standing policy is pretty solid where you can. Send them back if it doesn't work, so. I just asked you guys between now and next month, look at that and be ready to kind of.
Give you some solid feedback next month because October. October is just more review and policy discussion.
Yeah, and be ready to set that hearing. Um I guess it's the one that. Yeah, non-resident enrollment policy. Talks about the class size and all that.
And the hearing is just for the sake of discussing the policy or arguing the arguing? Is that, am I understanding that right?
That's just, yeah.
You don't think we have a choice, right?
You have, yeah, and you have, it has to be posted two consecutive weeks on the website.
I mean, is it a hearing over a hearing over the adoption of a of this new policy, I'm assuming.
Yes. And again, that the non-resident enrollment policy. Procedure consideration seven twenty twenty-three, that one. Kind of has some recommendations in red based on. How to set capacity and some of those other things. Um again, like I said, I don't think it's going to be. A a vague, I mean, hopefully you start doing things. Great around here and and kids want to come here because of the great things we have going on, but. I think there needs to be a lot of focus on this. We don't just. We can set our capacity limits every year, but the policy is going to be one-time deals.
Need to have a solid policy so you can. Use it.
Yes.
And not have to.
If they're not staying.
Not have to interpret it on the fly and.
They they talked about you can have a ninety percent attendance, but whatever policy, whatever you put in that policy. Also asks the the rest of your student body has that here that you can't be separate. Those out of district kids. And then it also has kind of a form, an application for it. Put together for all that, so. Lot of stuff there that we're ready to move on, ready to.
Okay, any other questions? If not, then our last item for discussion is the Teacher Board of Education uh meeting dates and topics discussion.
Twenty-seventh was what? They were wondering. Really give a time though.
Of September, Bobby.
Yes.
I'm assuming.
He's confirmed date and time and select two topics that teachers um pick from. And move towards the twenty-seventh or possible forum. He didn't say what time, so I'm guessing. So I know it, you want it after, after regular school hours or after.
Something like. Two weeks prior to a board meeting on the Wednesday.
Seven is what he was wondering, time start Kevin was.
Yeah, I'm I'm assuming evening time.
But that was Brendan. Yeah, that's Brendan.
Coaches and stuff, but won't be able to come right after school.
There's.
So, yeah.
At least four of us that are probably going to be harvesting something by then too, so the later the better as far as someone being able to make it probably. Combine will be moving. I just stick our kids in it and we go get away from it for a while. Um but anyway, yeah, seven o'clock for me is probably just do a normal board meeting time as far as I'm concerned.
I mean, we're going to have corn mazes this year to go drive around.
Maybe. Um but do we need to give some topics then?
Here's what I'm going to read to you what um this is what Brendan sent Kevin and I to begin with. Um. The meeting Monday night on the agenda to start, let's do one agenda item. Some potential special topics could be facilities, professional development, student disciplinary policy. And procedures, as to any additional additions please share for the meeting. He sent us. He did some polling from the teachers and. Got some ideas, so class schedules mainly high school. Why does the schedule have to be turned upside down to accommodate three students attending N C K Tech for? Half a day, could these students receive core classes in an alternative way? Why are classes not making it on the schedule, especially when the district has um been putting money? For equipment into class in the past. Uh the possibility of adopting a seven-period school day to help eliminate the numerous students that. Supposedly don't have anywhere to go due to electives in the current eight-period day. Mainly juniors and seniors, I guess. Communication in all aspects of the school, especially when it comes to students with disciplinary actions, situations where students get third, fourth, fifth chances. And the teachers have no idea why or what special deal has been made between admin and student. Too much secretary and or special deals, lack of consistency. Students know this, it's hard to work in a place where you don't know what you can or can't do based on who the students are, who their parents are, dress codes for adults. Leaving early, class coverage, no personal time taken, subs are in half-day or full-day increments. What can we do to help when teachers need? To leave an hour. That's what Kevin says. Yeah, just a few things. So. Of course Brendan said that. I appreciate the feedback. We'll share this, this will be sharing.
I do like the idea based on what we need to accomplish of like the facilities piece of it, wouldn't be bad to have on there. And it uh. And it uh professional development was always on the back of my mind based on discussions, you know, coming off negotiations of effective professional development that they want to give some input on or. Or whatever too. So I mean, I think. From our perspective, if we're supposed to throw stuff out there. For this first meeting, that's a good. Good, uh that's the direction I would lean to start with.
So we just need to a couple of topics.
Are those are those two topics? Okay, I mean, I I mean, from our end, they've got. Some ideas and we've got some ideas, I. Just feel like to move the facilities piece along if that could be questioned and answers or discussion around that would be helpful and then. And then yeah, the professional development, yes. I'm all ears on that. I'm not deciding that on my own.
It seems like a. Seems like a good idea. That's kind of what I was going to say.
Well, it'll all need to be addressed at some point. That's the purpose of the meeting, so.
Some of those might be a little contentious to start the meeting, so.
I agree.
Well, then we gotta, we gotta, they can't go till midnight every night.
No, we've already, we've already told them it's not going to be an all-night meeting. It's only going to be one or two things will be discussed. Couple hours now.
Yeah, I think, yeah, seven to nine ex- expectation is more than ample time, I I would hope. Depending on the amount of topics, I know, I mean.
We've we've already told them we don't want to do any more than two.
As you say, is it, yeah, was it two at a time?
Was because there's no reason why they need to be there all night. There's no any reason that we need to be there all night. We know that they've got to get up and go and do things and there's.
Was was it discussed where we were going to select one and they were going to select one, or did we just, were we just going to try to come to some of you guys? Well, hel- help me out with how we decide what is the topics, I guess. That was that.
We should dictate the agenda. The purpose of what we're trying to do.
Right.
Yeah.
So.
I think it's fine if we want to add one or two items that. Like especially the facilities, I think it's very timely right now. Um but I I think they they need to have one or two things that they're they're wanting to bring to us too.
Yeah, I I think that's. I think that's kind of what the discussion originated around was how it would be determined is. No more than a couple of topics and we would possibly.
Throw a couple of topics, have him through, have him pick two and send back. And then I can let everybody know and we can decide which one we want to discuss. Is that the way you want to do it or?
I guess, but when are we deciding that and who's deciding that before the twenty-seven?
Saying I'm going to have Jeff call everybody.
Because well, it ends up. You guys are uh. Uh yeah, I mean, I think.
Hey, here's what they chose.
Yes, I I think.
Which one do we, I mean, we pick what we want. We we want to discuss facilities. We pick one topic. Facility is what we want to deal with because that's what's going to make, that's what we're needing most on right now, right?
Yeah, I would say, I'd say we pick one. And like for this first meeting, we'll pick one, we'll pick facilities, like we would like to discuss this topic. You pick a topic, let us know so we can prepare. You bring it. And then we can have a discussion about these two topics, this is for a first meeting, see how it goes. You know, these two topics could be discussed in. Half hour, forty-five minutes, we don't know.
But put a limit on it.
Yeah, I mean, or they could go the whole two hours. Yeah, I mean. This is all.
Will they have a meeting? Kevin's group.
He'll let them know or he'll.
Yeah, I just didn't know how that they have a chance to kind of decide and come back and.
My knowledge, she'll be able to because he's been in touch with them.
Okay. I think I would just let them, we'll just let them know that facilities is one of the items we is the the item, I guess we would suggest and.
So is this as a? Three. A three sit down with like. Some of them.
It's a board forum.
Okay, I I I'm just trying to make sure.
It's a board meeting.
Okay.
So if all the board can come, that would be great.
Okay.
Because we're trying to. So we need the gap that they think they're that's. Yes.
It'll be conducted just like this.
And at this late date, it will actually be a special meeting and then we'll sign a waiver.
Right.
But I will send the agenda out to those that have requested it. Like I do every meeting. That's right, yeah.
Yes, that's the other purpose, yeah, the special meeting purpose.
There can't be changes or additions once you walk.
Tangents and variations of it, yeah.
So it would be probably nice to have by. Right of the twenty-second, okay.
Yeah. Ten days.
Quick question, do administration come to this because listening to some of those topics was pretty much.
It's an open meeting.
I've got American Brian.
Administration is not needed. At this point. But that does not mean that in future we won't be bringing you in with it.
I don't want to hinder anything.
You just have to sit in a black chair back there, I'm a comfortable one.
Okay, do you have what you need then to? Back with them and I don't. That kind of need to clearly define this. It's not necessarily the negotiating. Negotiations team's job to to fulfill this the rest of the year. I appreciate you staying in that communication line because that's where it all kind of was born out of, but. If if it's working, I guess we'll just. Have to, uh it'll be.
It's no worries.
We're doing it every other month. We're doing it quarterly or every other month. I forget what was the format.
I would think, yeah, could six times.
We'll just want to have it as an agenda item.
Six meetings.
The the make sure we have it as an agenda item. For us. Yeah, so we so we make sure we get it, get our end of it discussed and decide what we want to do. For our piece.
So November, make sure we're on in November because it'd be at. End of November.
Yeah. Okay. Action items. Approved budget. As presented, any questions on that?
And there is a very specific motion to read.
Uh thank the president, I move to approve the L O B resolution as follows. Being resolved that the U S D.
One above that. Sorry, sorry.
Okay. Uh Mr. President, I move to approve the budget as presented, knowing that the means assessment and state assessment review. Was used in helping to determine the budget for this school year.
All those in favor? Motion carried six.
Sorry.
Okay, now the L O B resolution, any discussion on that before motions?
And this is something we approved in April, I believe, but they want us to just read it again at this time. It was. I don't want the new criteria. We approved to exceed. The revenue neutral.
President, I move to approve the L O B resolution as follows that one.
Yes.
Be it resolved that the U S D one oh seven school board shall be authorized to make a local option percentage in the amount of thirty-two percent for the twenty-three twenty-fourth year.
All those in favor?
And if you look at our and our, we did not go. Quite up to that, but that is. One of the marks.
Correct.
It's five to one.
Oh, sorry. Thank you.
Approval of the K D H E grant.
Yeah, we just as. When we were talking about that in July, that was one thing that. Was assumed it was without prior, it wasn't, so I put up that application grant, we just got awarded that grant, so that we have those funds. To. Be able to hire that nurse to pay that that part-time nurse position, so. We've got some applications and tomorrow I'll be calling to set up interviews for that.
Is this more of an approval of the acceptance of the grant?
I've moved to approve that K D H E grant.
All its favor. Which carried six. Uh the we struck from the agenda. K A S B District Delegates for the twenty-twenty-three delegate assemblies.
And but last year it was Brendan and you.
Brendan usually does it.
Cause he usually goes.
Cause he usually goes.
Yeah.
Uh is that the deal that's in the early November?
Yes.
Yeah. I'll be sure and tell them.
When you is a.
Oh, yeah, you can make me the alternate, I guess. I'll make him go. All those in favor, or do we second it, right? All those in favor? Six oh.
Yeah, it's uh January.
Hold on, who dom- who dominated?
Removed. Yeah, six oh. Okay, we have to accept a gift from the Central Kansas Library System.
This is the, this is the one that last year we got five hundred dollars and. Uh Mr. Myers and Mrs. Bozarth talked about it and and they felt maybe they had a bigger need at the elementary at that time. And plus they were in limbo at the high school, I believe, with their librarian, so they let the elementary have last year's five hundred dollars. And with with the idea that this year the high school will get to spend the five hundred dollars and just kind of alternate. But we have already received that check. It has to be encumbered by the end of this year and paid by the end of January, so.
Motion to approve the five hundred dollar gift from the Central Kansas Library System, second.
What was the favor? Motion carried, so. Uh Director of Transportation, job descriptions.
Yeah, since you kind of um split that. Uh views up a little bit to hire those two positions, kind of felt like we should probably have job description. Uh dues up a little bit to hire those two positions, kind of felt like we should probably have job descriptions set up again prior to. Move those, obviously. In some ways, there's gonna be some, some overlap similar to what it was when there was the director and assistant director, we're gonna work together on a lot of maintenance stuff. But there's also separate duties of each one of them have separate.
You work on that.
Yeah, well, I can't think, I, I called around, I got a lot of people that had similar positions and kind of made it that are. And based on what the other one wasn't.
I'm going to approve Maintenance Director job description and the Transportation Director job descriptions.
All those in favor, motion carried six. All right, we're ready for executive seconds.
What are you looking for?
Well, just the motions and stuff.
Might return the page.
Okay, that's what I was looking for.
There is, and there's an exemplar list, you know.
Do we have any A, seven A matters affecting the students?
No.
And and so we just have the fires and stuff to discuss on the seven, so there's no seven A?
No.
Just go for seven B and. Ten minutes, then anything else at length to discuss there?
Yeah, let's go.
Eight thirty?
Eight forty-five maybe, about thirty minutes.
This, uh, you want to just. You, you. Mr. President, I move we go into executive session with Mr. Russell, the president, to discuss employee contracts and persons for the non-elected personnel exception or coma. You'll be meeting on the Zoom at the boardroom at eight forty-five.
All those in favor, motion carried six.
Thanks, guys, for finally getting back in sync.
I know.
Uh yeah, I move to accept the resignation of Joe Griffith as Cook concession sponsor effective immediately.
All those in favor, six oh, motion carried.
I move to hire the following Alan Davis's.
Oh, oh wait, we have another one?
Yeah.
Two on my list.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Oh, you accepted Nate at the last meeting.
I want to make sure we got that covered, okay.
I'm moved to hire the following Alan Davis's Maintenance Director, Travis Garst as Transportation Director. Julie Mcatee is Cook.
All those in favor, motion carries six.
No, they, did I, well, you know what, yes, you should have ignored that third page, because you shouldn't have got that, that was.
That was this thing, right?
Yeah.
Yes, and that was on there, but but that was my. No, that was my list to make sure we got them, and I went back and checked and Nate had resigned on Friday and you guys had a meeting on Monday, so you.
I move to adjourn.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Oh my goodness, never has.